Sorry to all the up there.
Oh, you're good. I gotta get the button to work anyway.
Okay, we'll call the meeting order and start the evening with the pledge.
My pledge is that we are the United States of America. To their fatherland, their representative nation, our nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out and just to reiterate with, Linda said if you're here for the public hearing, you don't have to fill out one of the comment cards, but if you got something else for public comment time, just fill the card out and bring it up here and we'll get you up there. So we'll move with the approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections?
No.
Dan.
Done.
Entertainer motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Questions for administration on the consent agenda? Okay, entertainer motion to approve as presented.
Make the motion.
Thanks Mel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, the agenda's set. No visitors. Did anybody have any public comment cards that weren't about the assessment? Okay, so none there. So we'll move right to the 2023 street project. We'll start with a presentation from the city engineer and then move into the public comment period. So Brandon, all ears?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, in your council packet is the 2023 street improvement project. First step tonight here, we will have a public presentation. And as Mayor, you mentioned, we will have a public hearing, we'll have public comments. And then there's also been some written comments that are in your council packet that have been received. In addition to that, there is a possible resolution to adopt the assessment. And the assessment role has been sent out to the property owners. And everybody in the public, there is additional copies of the assessment role back at the podium as you came in there. So feel free to grab one. So then after, if we do consider, if the council does continue with the resolution to adopt the assessment, we also have a resolution to potentially award a construction contract to start the construction process. So with that said, I'll jump into the presentation here tonight. Welcome, everybody. My name's Brandon Theobald, WHKS. I am the consulting city engineer. I see some familiar faces that were here at the initial hearing on the project. We're at the kind of final step here, the final assessment hearing. This is likely going to be the meeting and the resolution to adopt the assessment. The council, if they're going to move forward, is going to be tonight. So with that said, I'll just jump into it. A quick outline of what we're going to talk about tonight. We're going to look at the project area. Look at some quick background on the project, what's been, what's being proposed. I'll look at the construction schedule if we're moving forward tonight. I'll look at some costs, look at some of the assessment process, the Minnesota State statute 429 that was laid out in some detail in what we sent you as public notices and what was in the newspaper. And then again, we're going to have public comments in the form of a public hearing. Now, this is the map here of the project. As you can see on the west side, there's Second Street. Southwest is on the top, excuse me. North is up. On the west side there, it's labeled Seventh Avenue, but that's actually Eighth Avenue. That rode parallels the railroad tracks over to Third Avenue. And the bottom is the northeast part of town. That's Fourth Avenue Northeast. From Seventh Street down to First Street, jumping over Third that was repaved a couple of years ago. The properties in purple there are properties that are proposed to be special assessed. You can see they all have a number on them and that corresponds to the number on the assessment role. But again, the copy's in the backside of the council chambers and was sent to you property owners. So each property there established a number. You can see a couple of those properties that have one and a half and three REUs. And you can see a couple of properties there on the corner. So one and a half RU was assigned to some properties that had larger lots that could potentially be redeveloped or commercial properties. And then all the other properties are one RU. The discussion that we've had at the council at the previous meeting was a house is a house is a house if they're generally all the same size. So assess them all equally as one RU. On the south side of Second Street, southwest, there's some townhouses there. There was some discussion when we moved forward the project and ultimately the council decided to send you the notices about those townhouses and assessing them as one RU. We talked about past project practice and assessment policy, had been assessing them one RU. So that's what we've moved forward tonight and that can be a council consideration. So that's the gist of the maps there. You'll see the corner lots, those are proposed to be assessed at a half RU with the idea that they could be a potential future assessment on the other side of that corner lot. If a corner lot has both sides being improved, as you can see there at the cul-de-sac at Sixth Street Court, that is one RU on those properties on this lower left corner of the map there. That's the one part of the project. This is the second part of the project. We applied the same principle with the special assessments. This is the northeast part of town, Sixth Avenue from Seventh Street to Third Street and Eighth Avenue from Third Street, almost to Fourth Street there. And again, same thing, have a numbering system that corresponds with the assessment role. So that's the project scope and kind of footprint, quick background. Council approved the feasibility report at their December meeting. We're looking at as a project area just defined, laid out there in the bullets. Pavement was in fair to poor condition. We received some complaints. Wanted those project areas to be pushed up in our capital improvement planning and pavement planning. So we ultimately look at the city as a whole. We've been working on projects and upgrading them as we've gone. And obviously frost in Minnesota is rough on roads, so other roads have become in need. So we manage the city as a whole and ultimately prioritize our spending and your tax dollars. So these are what's kind of where next up on the list. We did look at sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer. They're in generally good working order. Last meeting that we had, we did talk about the amount of backups of the sanitary sewer. So we do have a citywide sewer INI reduction project that kind of, as that project is being rolled out, the city council, we reviewed our plan to address the INI and the amount of info infiltration rain and groundwater getting into our sanitary sewer. So we incorporated those improvements into this project. There's going to be some other sanitary sewer lining projects that are being done in the area. But that doesn't necessarily affect what we do with the sanity, with the road here. So that work is also kind of being done in parallel. So we've been coordinating those efforts. No sidewalk and majority project. Just wanted to note that, or we did note that in the feasibility report. So what are we proposing to do? The feasibility report ultimately addressed this. We recommend reconstructing the roadway. We're going to reclaim, which is grind up the existing pavement and the rock eight to 12 inches, resettle kind of the base down, take out some of the material, shape the road up and ultimately pave in four inches of new bituminous pavement. We're going to replace deteriorated sections of the existing curb and gutter if we have settlements or where plows have hit the curb. There's going to be some spot repairs to be completed. No new sidewalk is being constructed. We're going to replace sanitary sewer castings and old chimney sealers kind of seals up the top part of our sanitary sewer manhole. So we don't get all that INI and groundwater into our sanitary sewer, which overwhelms the sanitary sewer that backs up in the homes that we experienced in 2019. So we are incorporating that work into this project. There is one spot repair of the sanitary sewer on the main that we're going to dig up and fix that. We can't fix it from not digging it up. So that's a part of the project that's not being special assessed. That cost is being absorbed of the sanitary sewer enterprise fund. We have to adjust gate valves for our water shut offs, storm sewer catch basins and manholes. So we're going to adjust those as needed to get to our new grade as we pave the new roadway. And there's no additional storm sewer facilities proposed. Quick update here on the schedule. January, most of you here were for the hearing on improvements. That was where we said, are we going to stop this project? Are we going to continue the project? The council elected to continue on the project. Hence why we're here today. We did early improvements at that January meeting. We bid the project in February and we get to some costs. We got some good news on the cost, ultimately going down for the city and you as citizens being special assessed. So we're here tonight in March to have the final assessment hearing. And assuming this project's moving forward, we're looking at beginning construction in the spring, completing construction in October. I do, did have a conversation with our contractor about their schedule. We've left a pretty wide window here open. They're looking at starting this probably about middle of summer and getting in and getting out and getting it completed. So I think that's important, but we didn't want to leave a kind of a wide window for the paving contractor to come in. This is ultimately a hearing on the assessments and honestly a pre-construction meeting or a public meeting with construction. So we'll have one of those once we get closer to construction. And again, invite you property owners out to talk about logistics of construction and timing and schedule, whatnot. So with that said, your comments should be directed at the assessment, knowing that we'll have the construction questions at a later date. Some cost here. This figure here shows the cost. What's crossed out there is the preliminary cost that we presented at the last council meeting, the hearing on the project. As you can see there, based on the bids that we're going to look at and consider tonight, the total amount to be assessed and the total project's gone down. You can see the assessment method has changed, excuse me, has stayed the same at 120 RU. It's a residential equivalent unit. And again, we have left in 30% of the total project cost to be assessed. So what does it all mean? Again, crossed out is preliminary, in bold there is incurred. So you can see we're about $2,500 or what was proposed preliminary from the feasibility report stage. After our bids here, based on our construction bids, we're just over $2,000 for one RU. And then you can see it cascades down a thousand for a half RU at corner lot. And one and a half RU is just over $3,000. Three RU is just over $6,000. You can see the criteria there. And again, that correlates back to the map and should correlate to the assessment role that's in the back of the council chambers here. Appeal process, Minnesota State statute 429 lays out how kind of a special assessments work in the state of Minnesota. So tonight, any written objections will be considered at the city council along with your public comments. If you do have written objections to the council, serve them tonight. And then within 30 days, you can appeal that to district court, again, assuming the council moves forward with adopting the assessment role. And then if that happens and that starts a process where we provide you the information and all the paper necessary to present your appeal to the district court. And then the court, as you can see here, shall affirm the assessment or set it aside or order reassessment. And then any cost that was incurred by the property owners, if they do not prevail, is borne by the property owner. And then if you do not provide appeal tonight, then you have waived your right to present such appeal. So that's the synopsis of the Minnesota State statute 429. Again, that was laid out in the letter that you all received and what we had in the newspaper. So with that said, I'll pause. Again, it's a public hearing, so I have public comments. And welcome to bring any written comments forward. And again, I don't want to necessarily get into all the details of the construction process because that's not the point tonight. We'll have that at a later date. And we'll again, send you all notices when we get closer to construction. So we'll have our contractor and our construction staff and a point of contact at that time. So with that said, I'll maybe pause mayor and go from there.
Yeah, good. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. If you have comments, if you just come to the podium and just state your name and address and then your comments. So we'll go ahead and open that up.
Oh.
Yeah, come on up, just state your name and address for the record and then...
Dana Meyer, 601 Sixth Avenue Northeast. I was under the understanding that I was have to pay this $2,000 some dollars for 15 years. One every. How was I?
No, it's $2,000 total. If you choose to, you can say, I want to put it on my taxes and install myself for 15.
I thought the first paperwork we got a month or so ago, they were talking about curb and gutter, sidewalks and ripping up my driveway. And I'm like, I gotta pay $2,000 for 15 years? That's $30,000.
Yeah.
That's all I got to say. I don't understand. I only owe this.
Okay, thank you. Kind of clarify the process.
Again, that process I think was laid out in the last notice I received. So on this assessment, it can be paid to the city by the date on there usually, what, November 15th? It can be paid. If it's not paid, then it basically rolls over your taxes and it shows up on your tax bill. And then that would be over 15 years. And there is an interest rate that was proposed in there based on the current prime rate and past practice of the city council.
I'm not worried about that. I better stand back up.
Yeah, go ahead.
How long will one road be closed for a while? I just gotta figure out when I need to get my boat out so I can get up north.
Yeah, getting into some construction conversation here, but generally asphalt paving is quicker than like concrete and we're not going to rip a new water and sewer down the road. So I would expect that between coordinating with our construction staff, we should have access at most time, maybe like during the day during when they're actually paving, they have to kind of close the road down.
Is it never really going to be closed, huh?
No, we, when we dig that sewer up, we may send traffic both ways. And if we got a driveway, we'll have to work with you. But again, we'll have a point of contact in the construction side of things when we get there to coordinate.
I thought we were going to have a nightmare like Manorville Avenue. Oh my God, we're... Oh, we get groceries home. Never mind.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You got your question. What?
Well, I'm just about deferment for, you know, if you're older. Well, I'm 70. I've had the house for 20 years. And they say you could get, do I have to come through you or do I have to go through somebody else?
Just come to city hall and then they'll... Linda, will you be the one taking care of it?
Yeah, we'll coordinate between the city clerk and the finance director. So you'd come in, there's some paperwork they have for you to fill out for that deferment. And then they'd certify that deferment to the county. And then those costs will be deferred. So you won't have that cost until you would sell the property.
Oh, okay. So that's it?
Yep, just come out to city hall.
Okay.
I'm just moved to 204 Northeast. And I just got one question. It says, or a couple. You say the underground's good before we're, I'm hearing. And I'm just curious now, so since the underground's good and we do the reclaiming and paving, then the city will no longer have to pump sewer out into the street then, out of the manholes? After a heavy rain?
So we have a larger encompassing INI reduction program. Because all I hear is some pumps and laterals inspection. So we've been aggressively, I think we've got 98% of the town completed. There's some that are still lagging or have time to get those fixed. We have that going on. Within that drainage way, every sanitary sewer casting has an open pick hole. It's being replaced as part of a separate project. We're lining a few thousand feet of sanitary sewer that are our most egregious leaking sanitary sewer. Next year, the year after, we're going to replace some manholes and seal up some manholes that are leaking. So we're, we're not necessarily taking the approach of replacing sanitary sewer. We don't have enough money and time to replace it all. We're going after the leaking part of the sanitary sewer. So that's how we're looking at reducing it. The other thing that is part of our, again, encompassing INI plan is replacing the Maston Creek trunk line. It starts at the treatment plant, follows the trunk line back up to the old railroad truss over Maston Creek crosses, where your sewer comes down to First and then goes out.
Yeah.
So we've kind of modeled, we have modeled that and found that that's more of a bottleneck and there's limited capacity in there. And we're worried that we either, one, got to reduce the amount of INI when it rains like 2019. It's got to stay out of the sewer, out of the some pumps, not pumping to the sanitary sewer. Or we're going to have to convey that sewage down Maston Creek, Maston Creek trunk line to the treatment plant. So we're planning all three of those stages, right? We've done the some pumps. We're doing the reduction of the castings and the lining. So that's how we're attacking keeping it out of the sewer so it doesn't overwhelm our sewer. And then again, increase the Maston Creek trunk line. As you can imagine, that's a lot of pipe for a long distance. So that's a big budget. We got a council workshop to, to look at how that fits into our payment and sewer fund.
I'm all for the pavement. It needs pavement. I just always concerned why we're covering up stuff that's not working. That's all I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I would say what's probably not working is that what, what I'm not so much concerned about is the sewer in your house, in that road, that's a problem. It's other things that are contributing to raining groundwater that's overwhelming our trunk lines down Maston Creek.
And like I said last time, you're, everybody in our area, people are starting to put in the backflow valve, you know, while we just keep moving that problem north.
The backflow event is not going to help the system as a whole. I agree 100%. It'll help individual property owners, but it's going to suck it uphill.
Mine's twice now, we couldn't use our sewer because of heavy rain. And you guys had to pump the manhole to keep people from getting in trouble, but...
Yep. And then so the other part of that, that plan is you asked if we're going to pump again. I would say, yes, we have provisions to pump because no matter how much we try to reduce it, no matter how much the rainfall events are, let me look at 2019.
That's putting sewer out into the streets when we've got a pump, which we got to do. I understand that.
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is the, this other part of that encompassing INI reduction plan is we have a standard operating procedure in place now. When rainfalls are expected, to have staff ready to pump.
And they are. They're doing great.
And we've actually purchased two larger pumps to supplement the existing pumps that we have and pump that down sooner. So that's, again, there's a lot, we're fighting it from a lot of different directions, right? Pump sizing pipes where we need to, getting, keeping the water out by some pumps and laterals and manhole castings and the manholes that are leaking. So we're fighting that. We're going to be doing a project this summer and then having the contingency plan. Because I always tell, never say never when it comes to rainwater flooding.
I know.
We got that provision to pump out of the sewer is in place. So we've kind of attacked it from all kind of angles to reduce it. I just don't think that, to directly answer your question, I don't think the sanitary sewer within the house or the, your, your street that you're talking about, Millian Overling, is our reclaiming and paving is not necessarily the problem. It's other things on a larger scale, so.
Okay.
And I don't have the map. I took it out of my desk at the office. But that block does have some lining going into. So some of that's going to be relined.
Oh, okay.
So I forgot my map at the office, so.
Yep. So again, we, going back to the big master plan that we kind of put together was, we looked in every single manhole in town and we looked at every single sanitary sewer line, found defects, developed the score of work, brought it forward to the council and said, this is how we're going to look at it paying for it. Here's the best bang for our buck. And this is how we're going to attack it moving forward.
Okay.
In addition, again, to all the some pumps and laterals.
And the other thing is, as far as the reclaiming, you know, does the city budget so many blocks a year? Can we do that or?
Reclaiming.
So we don't have to charge the homeowners for, did we used to do that?
We have a budget for...
I thought years ago we did.
Street maintenance, we, we do have $150,000 a year budgeted for street maintenance. Chip ceiling and crack ceiling.
When the ones that are bad.
Yep, the chip ceiling is...
I remember they used to go in and do a few blocks a year so we stayed caught up on it.
Well, the chip ceiling, since the six years I've been involved...
It wasn't chip ceiling. They actually went in and ground it out.
That was before...
Reclaimed it. Yeah, I know it was. But I know years ago, we used to do so many streets. They reclaimed it and there was no charge to the homeowners.
Sure.
You know, it was in the budget for so many streets, like we're doing in our area.
Right, okay. Yeah, I guess I, that's before my time as far as doing that. I don't know if you've been around.
You remember.
I remember.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, we're not doing that. I don't know what happened. Because you stay caught up on your streets. Like, I mean, our streets are, they're hurting right now, but obviously because of weather, but you know, I understand it. It's not going to last forever, but...
Years of not...
Not stay caught up.
Yeah, exactly. So again, the $150,000 that has been traditionally budgeted for street maintenance, we got really aggressive with chip ceiling, crack ceiling, albeit it's not what we're doing here.
No.
But keep what's good. So we didn't, we didn't want to be in this situation where we have to come in and do the very intensive replacing all the pavement. Because that maintenance goes a long way. So that was something that we established both six years ago and getting more aggressive and doing that chip ceiling, crack ceiling and budgeting.
I guess then, just my last thing, the other thing, I'm glad we're doing mine reclaiming and everything. I'd love to see a deal in the bid that, once they reclaim it, don't give them all summer to pave it.
Yeah, so there is a provision in there.
I got to drive over there. I want my cars cleaned. I'm sorry, but I'm a fussy guy on cars.
So two things is one, that's in our contract documents, that hey, we're giving you a big window. When you come to town, reclaim it, reset the castings, get the curb and gutter done, get the material out of there and then pave it. And that needs to be one contiguous operation.
Right.
So they're not going to come in and reclaim it.
You've seen how many times we reclaim streets in town here and they sit all summer.
Yeah, that's, that's on our contract documents. And Rochester Sand and Gravel is a little better that we're looking at potentially entering into a contract with tonight. So I've talked to them with their project manager. They said, yeah, they're going to come in and stay onsite and get the job done. So they're, they're well aware of what our expectations are. It's still construction, but we're going to push them to do it again, so.
I know. I'm dead construction.
We're going to have enough streets drawn, so.
Everything's not on time, but it'd be great if they don't, don't sit all, all summer.
We're prepared for that. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Yep, you too.
Okay, anyone else?
I was interested. Janice Fordstrom Durst, 401 Sixth Avenue Northwest. I was interested in how you came up with the interest charge. I had talked to Tim, but I thought at the end there was some 1% that was added on to your calculation. And I was wondering...
The, the policy says prime rate plus one and a half is what we've done in the past. So that's what we're...
And the one and a half is for?
Cost of our funds if we have to, if the rest, if we have to subsidize that.
So what's the first eight?
Incentivize people to pay it, to finance it somewhere else. It's kind of a last resort for financing. I mean, we'd rather not finance it. And if we have to, we're using taxpayer dollars to finance that. So if we would have, if we use some of our fund balance and we would have to go out for cash somewhere and borrow money right now, we're going to have to borrow it at whatever percent. So it's more of an incentivization to...
So what percent do you have to borrow at?
I have no idea.
Oh, but you have an idea that you should charge nine. What's the interest rate you're charging?
Well, prime rate is, right now it's 7.75. So the, the interest rate was one and a half, or one and a half percent plus. So I think it's 9.25.
That's correct. Yep, nine and a quarter.
Nine and a quarter.
Yep.
So if you don't have to go out and borrow money during this project, would you refund that back?
For the next 15 years, we don't know. So if we finance it, finance it for 15 years.
But sometimes down the road, you would know whether you'd had to borrow.
I, we'd have to talk about that. I personally know. I, I mean, it's more of just the policy of prime plus one and a half, just like we had on Third, Fourth and Fifth, like we had on Manorville Avenue. Just the policy that we've had. I mean, we'd rather not finance it at all, but that's just gives somebody an option if they can't pay it. Or they can get financing through a home equity line that's, could be less than that. So...
Okay, I'm just not sure that the city should be making money on the interest.
The city really doesn't make money time. You look at, if we borrow the money out, we have to borrow money again to pay all the bills. Plus we have all the staff time involved in the payments, the paperwork. So when you tally it up, the city doesn't make money. It wasn't, it's not a goal to make money. It was a goal to offset the cost of the city.
It's just to break even?
No.
So that's what you're saying is that, on that part, that you could justify that you're just breaking even?
Because just... No, it's not even, it's, it's not a mechanism for the city to make money. It's an option to give people that can't pay the $2,000 upfront. They have an option to do it without going to the bank. Say someone doesn't have the credit to borrow the money, this gives them the opportunity to do it. We would rather not do it. It's more of an, it's just, it's an, an option to do it, not a requirement.
Just trying to push them to go get the money someplace else.
We would rather as tax, to, for, using taxpayer dollars.
We'll charge you a higher interest rate than you could get someplace else.
Correct. It's kind of a last resort financing.
Yeah.
We'd rather not do it. Because we'd rather not use taxpayer dollars to make loans. Is what it comes down to.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got a question on that wheelage tax on every vehicle. How come none of this is going back into the fund?
Ah, that's county.
On the streets. It's $20 per vehicle.
Yeah, it's county tax. I don't, we don't have anything to do with it.
But isn't that supposed to be for the streets, maintaining them?
County, I, that's a county fee. I have no, it doesn't have, the city doesn't benefit from that whatsoever.
Somebody is.
Dodge County wheelage tax. So Dodge County would be a good one to ask of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, that's a good question. But I think it's more like for county roads.
Okay.
But yeah, the city doesn't benefit from that whatsoever. We don't want to do a wheelage tax for the city either, so.
No.
No, we don't.
I don't believe it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Appreciate the comments from everybody. It's never an easy topic and no one, no one enjoys it. Written comments, there are written comments in our public packet that is there. It's available for the public. There were three or four emails and letters there. Okay, so any discussion, comments, questions from council? Okay, as uncomfortable it is, I'm going to recommend that we move forward. It's work that needs to be done. It fits with the policies that we've had in the city for quite some time. And the two most recent projects, it fits with the same exact parameters of what we've done there for everybody else. So in the interest of fairness, I don't know if it's really prudent to change how we're doing things. That's my opinion. If anybody feels differently, speak up.
I think it's a new year and a new council.
Yep.
Change is a good time to do right now. This is a relatively inexpensive project. It's come down from what we thought. I think it'd be good to see if we can't come up with that $240,000 from somewhere else.
Okay. And what precedent would that set for the past stuff?
I mean, apparently we changed it before to start doing assessments. Changing it back wouldn't be unreasonable. 15 years ago sounds like good times.
Right, I think, I don't know for sure, but I think the problem was that the $150,000 or $100,000 that gets allocated for street repairs every year, I mean, it's a million dollar project. We couldn't do a half a block a year if we did that. That's where it went to chip sealing and cracking.
Yeah, well, doing the project is not what I have an issue with. It's, it's for 30% special assessment. Right. And the city's already paying almost $600,000 of it that's spread amongst the whole city, you know.
I hear you.
I don't, I don't like the extra one-time tax that, that we have to ask the residents to pay.
And I would have no problem with that because I hate assessments to begin with. But in my mind, if we do that, then we need to retroact to go back and refund everybody who's been special assessed since we started these projects.
I mean, I took a pretty huge special assessment and as far as I'm concerned, as long as we can... I mean, I took a pretty huge special assessment, and as far as I'm concerned, as long as we can get away from it going forward, I, I'd be happy with it, you know, and I can't speak for everybody, but, you know?
It would be hard to justify saying, well, let's take away this assessment fee, and if a project comes that's a hundred thousand more, four hundred thousand more...
Two million dollars.
You're, it's, where does the threshold between we can try to find that money versus this is an improvement to a part of the town that you live in, you're going to benefit more than, than other people, we're all still paying for it, we are, all are literally paying for it, but it's a special assessment for those that live on that street, it's, it's a little different, I, I, that would...
Thing is, is that the people that live on the street, yeah, it's the street in front of their house, but they're not the only people that use that road, like, especially with Mavil Avenue, like, commercial vehicles are driving up and down that road all the time, they're receiving just as much benefit when they live, you know, right across from the school and they operate a trucking business, they didn't pay any special assessment, yet they're using that road and doing the most wear on it compared to everything else, right, so, I don't, I don't agree with the whole benefit argument, if you, in, in terms of, if we have a project that requires more money, I would say that we either have to budget more money for it, or if it's bad enough that everybody agrees that assessment is needed because we need to do it now, then we deal with that on a case-by-case basis. I mean, this project is small enough that we could probably handle the, the two hundred and forty thousand of the special assessment.
Would that, would you apply the same principle to new construction?
Yeah.
So we should subsidize everybody who buys a lot, we should, the city should pay thirty grand to build...
Are you talking about for development, like residential development areas?
You buy a lot, you're buying, you're paying for the road, the curb, the gutter they're built, driving on, it's about thirty grand, so...
Well, it's built into the cost of the property that you bought, right?
Sure, but you're still paying for road, curb and gutter.
You're being, paid, you're paying for it.
Yeah, well, I mean, anybody who buys a house in town is paying for the previous road that was built at some point.
Well, what he's saying is you just paid thirty thousand dollars for that section in front of your house, and everybody can drive on it, do you now own that? No, so it's no different than assessing somebody to fix the road in front of their house, which benefits their house, it benefits the city, benefits the residents, but it benefits people that live in front of it too, the same way.
Right, but it benefits everybody else that drives through it, I mean, it...
Well, I, I'm, I'm not being, I'm just saying, do we, do we, if we're gonna, if the city's gonna pay for all road, the street construction, then are we gonna start picking up the tab for the development, you know, cause our, our stance has been development pays for development.
Okay, so...
So, existing taxpayers don't have to go pay for the road.
For example, the QuickTrip, right, we're expecting them and the lot across from them to pay for the extension of Sixteenth Street?
Part of that, yep, percentage of it.
They don't, they don't, well, somebody else's, will we paying some of that too?
MSA dollars are...
MSA, yeah.
It depends on the situation, I think, right, QuickTrip's coming in, they already want that spot, and I assume that we're gonna take it whether or not we extend the Sixteenth Street or not, right?
That I don't know.
So...
A little bit of logistics, so, um, QuickTrip needed Sixteenth Street to be extended, um, to have their second access, cause they're not getting a full access out on Fifty Seven.
So there are special circumstance, right?
Yeah, absolutely, cause we're, we're building a new road.
And QuickTrip was willing to pay for it, though?
Yeah, and QuickTrip has paid for that half of that road, um, based on our feasibility report numbers, um, so they're paying, to the mayor's point of development pays for development, they're paying their fair share of that roadway, the other half of that road, we actually negotiated, we had agreement for that, uh, property owner, that's gonna benefit from it, right, we're opening up that subdivision or that farm.
Right, and we're gonna be providing city sewers and water services to that property?
No, that's not part of the Sixteenth Street project, so...
It's not gonna get extended down Sixteenth Street for them?
Uh, no, there's no need to, there's service other parts of town that that area's gonna be served from, um, so, but the roadway cost that is being borne partially by that developer, he has some skin in the game and has costs that's gonna be applied to that lot when it comes into town, and that was a pass agreement the council approved.
Right, but on the other hand, if the city wanted to, say, take two dead-end streets and connect them, in an area that currently doesn't have anybody looking to develop it, would we charge the, you know, the people who own the fields money for that road that we just put in there?
We wouldn't build it.
We just wouldn't build it?
No, I mean, no, no need for us to build it.
Then I don't think we have an issue, because, like I said, if, if somebody like QuickTrip wants to come in and, and build, they want that road, they need that road, you said, for a second access, they want it, they're, they'll, they'll wanna pay for it, right, but...
Sure.
I have, I just had a question, um, what, how, how much would an eight hundred thousand dollar project, um, add to, if we were to put that in as a budget, part of our budget, how much would that increase the overall rate of taxes citywide?
Two and a half percent.
So, in terms of our average, our annual budget, if we were to increase our annual budget two and a half percent, what would the individual homeowner owning a, you know, our standard house that we use every year, how much is that gonna make everyone's taxes go up?
Well, theoretically, two and a half percent, right?
In theory, as long as their valuation stays the same, there's too many moving parts to know.
If you ignore the fluctuations in individual properties.
I'm just saying that, we, we've tried to keep the budget in line to keep from having to increase things by two and a half percent over the past few years, so what you're proposing is...
Two and a half percent for everybody rather than two thousand dollars for these people this year.
But you'd have to do that every year.
It wouldn't be two and a half percent every year, it'd be two and a half percent...
It's a project every year.
It'd be two and a half percent next year and then we could keep it level again, cause now we've got that...
But it's a project every year, so every year you'd be raising everybody's property tax, two and a half, three percent.
Two and a half.
We raise it more and maintain it.
Or more, because if you're talking about a repair project like you and I have gone through, where the assessment was, I think mine was seventy-five hundred, yours was eight?
No, that's two and a half, I only cover that three.
Yes.
Seven thousand?
Thirteen thousand dollars.
Yours was thirteen, because you have a larger lot, okay, but, so, when we have to do something like that, and all of a sudden we're looking at having all of that folded into everyone's taxes, you're looking at a substantial increase across the board for everyone living in Cassin.
That's right, which means that when we do a project like that, we should spend a cou- set a couple of years of setting money aside for it, so we don't have to do that, that's the way I see it.
So what if a project is one and a half million, though, and you only increase, and you only have eight hundred thousand dollars to your budget, then what happens when your, it's increased? So if you have a project that's one and a half million, though, and you only have it in your budget for eight hundred thousand, who's gonna allot for that remaining?
Yeah, yes. Well, that's, that's what the planning process is, right, if we know we got a million and a half next year, and our current budget accounts for eight hundred thousand, then we'd have to raise the levy a little bit to get the extra, right, or we gotta wait two years to save it up.
Or three, because the price just went up.
Or three, because the price goes up from inflation.
So now, so now you're gonna pay, uh, two and a half percent for three years, but you get nothing out of it until the fourth year, or the fifth year.
I mean, we could put the money in CDs.
You hope the prices still stay the same.
The prices are always gonna go up.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting a little off topic, we're getting a little off topic. No, I understand what you're saying, Paul, I told you, and I, and I've told you, I've told you with, since my first guy elected, we did the assessment on Third, Fourth and Fifth, and then we did the one on Mavil Avenue, in my mind, maybe I'm thinking about it wrong, is that if you live in the city and you commit into a new subdivision that's being built, you paid for your road, curb, gutter, everything that's there, and it's about twenty-five to thirty thousand, depending on the contractor you talked to, I just talked to one yesterday, he said it's between twenty-five and thirty thousand for that part of the improvement, the homeowner is paying a hundred percent of it, no other taxpayer in town is paying a dollar of it, zero percent, and if I say I did that, and in forty years I live there, I won't be, but I'll be long gone by then, but forty, fifty years from now, it needs to be redone, I have to pay thirty percent of it, and everybody else pays seventy percent of it, it, by the current policy.
Yep.
I would say if we're gonna do that, then we should apply that to the new folks in town too, they should get a twenty-five thousand dollar credit for their improvement, and everybody in the city should pick that up, so if we're building fifty homes a year, that's a million dollars a year.
The house that I bought, I wrote, the cost of that road that was originally put in, that the original homeowner paid, is already built into the price of my house, the same way it is for anybody else, so anybody who buys a house in town is, is paying that cost, it's just getting kicked down the road.
But there's no updates on the road in this twenty, thirty, forty years, so who paid for that?
The maintenance for the road should be paid by everybody as a collection, cause everybody uses the roads, some roads get used more than others.
Yeah, we do pay for maintenance altogether, it's just the replacement of it.
Well, replacement is part of maintenance, nothing lasts forever, like, we replace the pipes in the ground, we replace, well, we don't replace the sidewalks, we expect the homeowners to replace sidewalks, but, I mean, all, everything else except for roads gets spread out equally among every, everybody, but roads doesn't, and that to me just doesn't, doesn't, doesn't sit right.
Sure. I just wanna correct something, just so we're perfectly clear, you said, um, the road's the only thing that doesn't get assessed, we assess for other, um, portion of the project, Third, Fourth and Fifth, Fifty Seven, we assess for, um, water and sewer replacement.
Yeah, we did, but the policy says we shouldn't have been.
Um, I'd have to go back and read the policy, we have applied that on Third, Fourth and Fifth.
I, I know it was applied, but...
Because there is private water and sewer services to the center of the street, even to the main, so that was part of the Fifty Seven project, and obviously we don't have that portion of the project in here, we don't have water and sewer, but that is specially assessed and was assessed on Third, Fourth and Fifth, uh, we talked about curb and gutters and we replaced side, um, um, curb and gutter, we replaced driveway aprons, like your driveway apron is replaced, so there was other things going on.
My driveway was crated, I didn't have one, so...
Other than, well, the driveway apron, that is, so, um, and then we had some drainage improvements, specifically for housing, adding curb and gutter, so that was, that'll be part, that was all rolled into what we're assessing for the project, and as you're well aware, on Fifty Seven, we kinda correlated it back to Third, Fourth and Fifth, cause it was a unique project, state was involved, I, I get the discussion, so that's why we felt that it was appropriate to leave that assessment, cause you're getting new water and sewer and other things in addition to the roadway, um, so that, that has been the traditional policy in the last projects that we've done.
Right, but I still believe that we play, pay property taxes, and as property taxpayers, we expect the city to maintain what they're already providing for us as part of those property taxes, we don't expect to get a, a bill in the mail saying, hey, we replaced something for you, here's the bill, and I get that we're only paying a very small portion of it, but still, you know, it's, it's hard for people who pay thousands of dollars a year in property taxes to then get a thousand or two thousand dollar bill that they pay one time, cause, you know, they're, it's unexpected essentially, cause it's, when it, I don't know when these people first receive their notice, in December?
Yeah, November.
And, and they've got a two thousand dollar or more bill due by next November? I mean, it's, it's, some people can, can handle that kind of thing, and other people, you know, they're gonna have to go outside, and like you said, they're gonna have to go get a loan, you know, or they're gonna have to have the city provide them a loan essentially by putting it on their taxes and, uh, amortizing it over the fifteen years, and it's just, it's... I would rather pay two and a half percent to get rid of, well, two and a half percent or three percent extra as a property owner for the whole town and never have to do special assessments again, and maybe I'm in the minority there.
If we could do it for two, two and a half percent a year to do what we've done in the last eight years, but you're talking, just on the assessment projects, it'd be probably over four and a half million dollars.
Over eight years?
Over the, for the two projects that we did, and you have to come up with the money to do it, if we put that on the property taxes instead, you're talking, your taxes would be double today.
Well, four million over eight years is a half a million a year, that's which is smaller than this project.
No, you'd have to put the four million dollars on it, if the budget's four million, the levy's four million dollars now, that's an eight million dollar levy.
I know you s...
It's four million dollars we'd have to add to the eight million, four million dollar levy we have.
We already have a four million dollar levy.
An eight million dollar levy.
If we did, we assessed about four million dollars over the, the projects over the last seven, eight years, wherever it's been.
Yeah, four million dollars over eight years, though, is only half a million a year, so it'd only be a half million to the levy, correct?
To do the, the project cost, you'd have to come up with that.
Well, we're gonna bond, it gets bonded anyway, so...
Come up with the first two or three million for the first project, and when we did it at then, the interest rate was cheaper, plus the, the cost was cheaper, so by the time you did it now, that project would not be four million, it'd be six million, so now...
That might be true.
So now you push, be adding not half a million a year, you'd add in three quarters of a million a year, so...
Yeah, and it's...
And it would take, you'll never catch up at that rate, you'll never get a project done, cause you can't budget that for it, unless you wanna be adding...
When you think about Fifty, Fifty Seven, the state came in and said, we want to do this, this is what we're doing, we had some time because of COVID that helped, prepare for it, but when the state comes in and says, we're going to do this, if we're already putting money aside for a different project, and then they come in and say, we're doing this, well, now we have to take, either take that money that we've been telling taxpayers we're gonna spend on this project, reallocate it to Fifty Seven or a project similar, and then we're back to square one, we have, we, we, you eliminate the number of projects you can do by just focusing on one, and if you start to focus on more than one, now it's not two point five percent, now it's five percent, now there's three projects that we really have to get done in the next five years, we, we've done the road studies, we've looked at what roads need work, what infrastructure we need to do, so it, it's more than just that one project and that one, two, twelve point five percent, it's every project you look at, if you're going to do that, then you have to increase every time that amount, and each project's different, your project was different than this project because you had sewer and other things done.
Which is why I said that we, you know, a case-by-case basis, right, if something's in bad enough condition that we don't think we should wait, and we can't afford to pay for it without a special assessment, then maybe a special assessment is appropriate, and that's what these hearings are for, right?
We run into the problem of when you do it case-by-case, the, my biggest concern is who decides what case gets that and what case doesn't, and when the council changes every two to four years, someone could run just on the basis of they don't wanna pay their own assessment, and then they put all that back on the, the rest of the taxpayers, which wouldn't be fair.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
That's a valid point.
We run for more than just saving ourselves on our own taxes, we're, we ran to support our constituents, and if, if our...
Yeah, and I can't save myself on my taxes anymore, mine's done, I'm just trying to save everybody else.
But it doesn't save everyone else in the long...
Saves the interest of the bonds, if we didn't, if, if we didn't have to take out as much money to, on loan to do these projects, we would save money on interest, right, and obviously we don't have cash to do that right now, you know, but...
I think this would be a great conversation for our March eighteenth.
I agree.
Session, and maybe bring some cities that do do that, cause I, I, I'm not knowledgeable as to what other cities our size can fully self-sustain all those funds and costs throughout that process more than doing one...
Well, I assume they have higher property taxes, right?
That's a fair assumption.
That's a fair assumption. And people are already, are concerned about their property tax values, still paying on a, a fifty million dollar project at high school, middle school, elementary school, you've got your county costs, so to suggest raising property taxes is, it's gonna concern people.
Yeah, and businesses and...
And businesses, yes, so it's, if you can find a few, that would really help, cause then it would explain it better to me, what, how they would fund those things, if there are cities that do it differently.
Well, I know in the past, uh, there have been some cities that have tried doing it differently, and typically the, the only environment that I've seen it work is where there's extremely rapid growth, because what, I think, for example, like Elk River back in the early two thousands was having extremely rapid growth, so they were doing a hundred, a hundred and fifty new houses a year, you know, it was, it was kinda that boom cycle, and they were able to capture that new growth, you know, so much so that they could actually take the money from those, they weren't paying for the new roads, they weren't paying for the new houses, they were able to take the new property taxes and capture those and put that towards bonds and in the city itself. Typically, what I've seen is that, that, that's the only environment that it works in where you have, you know, tremendous growth, because otherwise, you, you know, what, your conversation's very valid today, is that it's gonna go back on the current taxpayers, so I mean, if, if you were seeing that kind of growth over a five-year period, you probably could capture that extra portion, keep the tax rate level, and then put it back into, you know, uh, debt service for projects.
I'll be paying for seventy percent of every project for the next thirty years I live here until my road needs it, so I will be paying towards other projects over that time span, and at some point, my road's four years old, at some point, I might have to pay a little, cause I've been driving on it for thirty years, longer than the person in northeast Cassin or southeast Cassin, it, it, I think we fail to think about how much we're, we already are providing, and it takes a little bit of time to build that, we have to build those funds and we have to keep going with it.
I, I know, I agree it's gonna take time, I just, the, the, the financial burden that we're putting on people, you know, maybe a few thousand dollars for me and you isn't a big deal, but for some people, it's, that's significant, right, and I, I would rather not do that, I, I don't wanna put that one-time cost and, or require a nine percent interest rate for those, those people who are already struggling, you know, that's, and I realize the alternative is difficult, you know, I'm not saying it'd be easy.
I hear ya, that, no, I don't, I don't think anybody enjoys the assessment process, and part of it, that's probably not part of this project, but the past two large projects is, for the financing to do the bonds, a certain percentage of the project had to be assessed in order to qualify for the financing, um, I'm forgetting the statute.
Twenty percent is required for the four twenty-nine bond series.
Cause otherwise you can't do that bond series, the interest rate's a lot higher, so, um, I hear ya, I don't like the idea of picking and choosing, either we have the policy or we don't, if the council wants to say we don't have the policy anymore, that's up to the council, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, but I don't like the idea of, let's not do it for this one, cause it's small, but then the next one might be right, cause I, from the past two experiences like we had tonight that were much more hostile, um, privately, conversations that didn't take place here, if we said we're gonna change that now, um, that's a precedent, I don't know if we wanna, where we, a road we wanna go... I don't know if we want to, where we, a road we want to go down because there're gonna be some very upset people that were assessed in the last couple of years. If we say now we're gonna pick and choose, um, that's my biggest thing is that if you're consistent with the policy...
I didn't say it was gonna be easy.
No, it's never gonna be easy.
And if you, if you take that line of thought, then, then we'll never be able to get to a better, in my opinion, a better place.
Did you have constituents come to you with this, or is this something more that you thought of? Because we're, we're here for constituents.
Just talk, this is talking with my neighbors, obviously from the fifty-seven project, you know, which was obviously a much larger amount than this is, but, you know...
That's something to think about, too, is we can have, we talk about those in our sessions. We talk about that at meetings, but in the long run, our goal is all constituents, not just the people that live on our street, not the people that live on northwest or northeast. We are thinking of everyone. And that's something to think about when we bring this idea forward, is if it's just a few people, is that a big idea, or is that something that's just a few people are thinking about?
Yeah. No, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, for me personally, um, if the council wants to say we don't want to have the policy, fine. But if, I just think it needs to either be the policy or not. As far as picking back and forth, I don't think we can do that part of it, in my opinion, for me. And with it being so recent and the, the extra two hundred thousand dollars...
Was it two hundred, what? I don't, I don't have my glasses on.
Yeah, two hundred and forty-two thousand.
Two hundred and forty-two thousand. You know, we, we put that on the levy, added another couple of percent to the levy. It just compounds. It never goes away. And that's just gonna compound with inflation. So either, either we're gonna have these assessments every now and then, it comes up on your block, or your taxes are gonna be much higher on a regular basis. I, and personally, if we've changed the policy, I think we need to go retroactive to refund the people that have paid the assessments. And, and whether, what that looks like, if we want to do it with the policy, I'm fine with that. But we go back to Sixth Avenue. It was assessed, what, two thousand, seven, eight, nine, whatever, seven, uh...
Six, seven.
Yeah. That was the first big assessment project. And going forward, it's been the same policy for fifteen years now.
Seventh Street Northeast was assessed towards the end.
You know, so I, if, if we want to change, I have no problem with that. But I think we need to come up with a way that we go back, refund everybody, come up with a ten million dollar bond or whatever, five million dollar bond, whatever that is, add that to the debt service. Everybody's taxes go up by whatever that is, three, four percent, and then it just goes with the payment. So I would have no problem getting rid of the assessment, but if, there's a lot of short memories that I remember their seven thousand dollar assessment, or their nine thousand dollar assessment, or thirteen thousand dollar assessment. On Main Street, we had a fifteen, eighteen, nineteen thousand dollar assessment, you know, on, on stuff there. So there's a lot of people that would be, I think it's just too fresh. So I have no problem doing that, if that's the direction of the council. And we can do that at any time. Uh, but for tonight, um, I'm gonna make the motion that we move forward um, to adopt the assessments as presented with the assessment roll. Um, and I would look for a second on that, and we can have a conversation at our meeting if we want to change the policy. We can change the policy, and we can always go retroactive. So that's my opinion. I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, on favor, sit aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Paul, thank you, four to one. And then let's add that to our, our conversation for our work session on the eighteenth.
Sure.
Okay. And I do appreciate the conversation because too many times we sit up here and there's nothing said. So, um, the, um, the conversation is appreciated, and I, I do hate assessments, so. But I just want to make sure we're treating everybody the same. So on to the resolution awarding the contract. On that?
Yeah, pretty straightforward. It is a resolution to award the construction contract. Uh, you can see our engineering estimate at about seven hundred ninety-one thousand. Uh, the lowest bidder was Rochester Sand and Gravel at seven hundred twenty-one thousand. Uh, we reflected those costs in the assessment roll. That was what, what we based our revised cost off. Uh, there was another bid received from Elcor Construction there at nine thirty-four. Um, by accepting the resolution, you authorize staff to enter into contract with Rochester Sand and Gravel. Answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon on that? Okay, hearing none, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Try it on, favor, sit aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to oral business discussion on liquor ordinance amendments.
Sure. Including your package, you've got a couple of pages there. And this is informational tonight. Uh, we are looking at a, a potential public hearing for this. And basically, what the goal is to bring this in compliance with state statute. Um, it's an issue that our deputy clerk has identified, and she's got the language there in front of you. So you can kind of see, um, basically, we're looking at state statute three forty alpha twenty-eight. It's dealing with small brewer off sale and the growler. Um, so we'd be amending the section of code, uh, one hundred and ten dot twenty-two, that's the city code. And the sections that are kind of gray are the ones that are, um, it didn't come in color, so you can see. But the gray sections are the ones that are being added. And basically, it's coming verbatim from that, uh, three forty alpha dot twenty-eight. So, and I asked her for some clarification based on some feedback I received in council members' address, and I appreciate that. Um, so that is what it is. The language that's being added is in gray. It brings us into compliance with, uh, section three forty alpha. The, the question I had was regarding the sales themselves on Sunday because that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But it is what the state statute is. I do have a copy of that, if you'd like to see that, um, that copy. So just information for you.
Okay. Any questions right now?
Yeah, so the, you said the stuff in light gray is being added?
That's correct.
And these are just verbatim what's being pulled out of three forty-eight?
That's right.
Do we need it in there if it's just matching with three forty-eight? Can we just say, you know, we, our ordinance is to match the requirements of three forty-eight? So that way, if they change it, we're not suddenly more strict?
Well, I think that's kind of what she's got there. If you look at that first line that's being added, meet the criteria established by Minnesota State Statute three forty alpha as may be amended from time to time. So I think going forward, Jan's goal is that, that we just comply with that currently. Yep.
Okay. So if, if they reduce their restrictions, would ours automatically reduce as well? Or would we have to come back to council and say, yeah, we'll update it to match them?
I mean, my understanding is we would just automatically apply those, those restrictions from three forty alpha.
Okay. And how many people does this affect in town? Is this just the new brewery?
I think it is just the new brewery. As far as I know, we don't have any other small brewer licenses.
And is this gonna affect their business any differently than how they've been operating?
Um, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Thank you. New business bid, bid letting and bonding.
Sure. Um, so I appreciate the, the time tonight to talk about this a little bit. I've got a memo there, including your packet. Um, and I know the, the mayor and I have discussed this a little bit already. So you're aware of a project, your safety project. The, um, originally, we were looking at working with USDA on that. And, uh, we've kind of run into a stumbling block with that because the USDA is, uh, they've changed staff. And so their, um, their new architect is, um, has advised us, they think we need to go in a different direction for the borrowing. So we were looking at a, a forty-year USDA loan. So we're kind of changing gears, and we're looking at a thirty-year, uh, debt issuance instead to, to pay for that. Um, so as you know, the amount is capped by the voters, and I, you know, I, I won't read my, my memo verbatim to you. Um, just wanted to let you know that I'm requesting that we authorize the bid letting and working with David Drown on financing with that project. Um, that'll keep us on a schedule that'll be more appropriate than having additional delays with the federal government and the USDA. Uh, one of the issues that we've identified is with interest rates increasing, obviously, what we want to do is we want to have an early call feature to the, uh, the bond issuance. So what we'll be doing is we'll, we'll, we will pay a little bit more upfront for that early call feature. With a thirty-year bond, usually your earliest call would probably be year fifteen. We'd like to be able to call that at year five. Um, so I think it's worth it to pay a, you know, it'll be, I don't know, ten and twenty thousand dollars to have that early call feature. But I'm expecting that interest rates will go down from where they are right now. I don't know that maintaining it as some of the folks were speaking about the assessment interest rate. I don't know, I don't feel that's probably sustainable, even with the federal government and its, its debt. They're gonna have to drop it to a certain degree. And I think in the long, in the long run, what we'll be able to do is we'll refi, hopefully at year five, we'll get a better interest rate, and we'll be able to reissue with a, a smaller payment. In the meantime, you know, our yearly amounts that we'll have to pay will be higher, but it will save us a little bit in the interest because instead of being a forty-year note, it'll be a thirty-year note. So basically, what I'm asking for is just, uh, feedback and clarification, authorization to go out to bids and coordinate with David Drown.
So since the, um, since it's thirty-year and the interest rate, I assume, is a little different than what originally was estimated, um, this is all being paid for through a fire hall levy, correct?
Well, it'd be part of our debt service levy. And I do include that, so good point to follow.
So I guess the question is, is, you know, our payment amount goes up, how does that compare to how much we're collecting in the levy?
Well, so you can kind of see what the debt schedule looks like on the third, kind of the third page there. You see the amounts, the re-offering premiums, and then what the yearly amount would be. So what we would expect to do is, based on our cash flow needs, you know, so I don't anticipate that we'll have the cash flow need for the entire amount initially. So what we'll probably do is until we start occurring those cash flow needs, we'll probably float that a little while. And what we'll do in twenty twenty-four is we'll capitalize the interest. So you can see what the amount will be for twenty twenty-four. So that would be our first payment.
Mm-hmm.
And so what we would do is we'll borrow that amount as part of the loan offering, and then we'll basically immediately pay it back into the loan. So we won't actually have a huge issue right away in the first year. And then what we'll have to do is we'll take the amount that we started letting last year, and we'll build it up to the amount that's needed as part of that. And it, it would average around four hundred and seventy thousand a year. As I said, the goal for us would be to be able to refi that at some point, lower the payment, and then, you know, kind of recalculate it. Um, having looked at the budget, I think we're, it, it's, it's sustainable. Part of it we have to remember is that part of that would be borne by the, the natural gas franchise I see that was instituted. The other thing is that we do have some reserves from that that have been collected over the last two and a half years, which will allow us to kind of have a, a curve of bringing that up to the level that's needed. You know, it won't be a shock all at one year.
Okay, yeah, I was just concerned that with a shorter term and worse interest rates, our cash flow may not be as great as we were hoping it was gonna be.
Yeah. I mean, I think that it's, I think that it's doable, um, you know, based on what we're looking at. And, and obviously, the goal, the whole goal would be, and hope would be, that the project comes in lower than seven million. Because every dollar that it comes in lower, we're able to...
It's fifteen percent cheaper like we did with those roads.
Exactly. So, and you know, with, you know, spoken, having spoken with ICS, spoken with a number of the contractors, they are seeing a softer market for commercial construction. So we do expect to have a number of bidders. Now, I don't know what that'll do with the project cost, but it, it should be a little bit more competitive because I think commercially, things are slowing down some. So, and I won't know that until we get our bids back. But that's my hope, is if we can keep it under that.
For ramping the payment up, if you want to call it a benefit of the project being delayed with the USDA, the natural gas franchise fee is accumulating to be able to ramp in without having to hit the debt service with the whole amount written one year, so...
Yeah, and in the short term, I mean, so short term, the first five years, you know, we'll, we'll be able to, like I said, slow, you know, curve that up, you know, and then at that point, we'll hopefully work into an area where we're comfortable with it. And then at that point, we'd also say, well, we can call it, and we'll refi, so it'll actually, I mean, that's the goal. We don't know exactly how it'll all go, but that's kind of the, the plan.
Okay. Do you need any action on that tonight?
So the action I'd be looking for would be a motion to proceed, to go out to bids uh, for the Fire Hall project with ICS and David Drown.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. On favor, sit aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, resolution establishing procedures relating to the compliance with reimbursement bond regulation under Internal Revenue Code.
So, that's kind of a long-winded, uh, way to say it and out. I can let Jess talk about this if she wants to. Um, but this is a resolution we approve every year, which David Drown asked us to. Basically, it's a reimbursement resolution. So we're just letting, uh, we're passing this saying that we, the city has the option to reimburse itself via debt issuance for costs that'll be accrued throughout the projects. And what we did was, we did include all the projects we may potentially bond for this year. So you can see in there, I think, the amount, what page is that on, Jess? Uh, eight point eight, eight point eight million is the maximum that we would be authorized for. And there's a variety of things. So Fire Hall, um, equipment certificate, and then the regular street project would all be included. Now, um, I think to Councilman Johnson's point earlier, my hope is to use some of the current cash that we have on our books to amortize some of these costs, and also possibly to do some interloan transfers. So I'm not anticipating that we'll be at this amount, but we want to make sure that we're not stuck out and, and stuck with some costs. So that's kind of why that amount is where it is.
So just to clear this up for me, this is, um, the whole point of this is to allow the city to use city funds, and then once the bonding gets done, to then use some of that bonding money to give back to ourselves because we use city funds?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, so what we'll end up doing is, we don't have the financial ability to, to fund all this upfront.
Of course.
So, so what we'd end up doing is we have a short-term, um, negative fund balance, which becomes a long-term liability when we issue the debt. So you, you know, basically, go from having a short-term, you know, negative fund balance to the long-term by issuing the debt. And then that, that's actuarially how the auditors look at it. And it was interesting. We got done with the audit this week, and, uh, you know, Jess's first audit, and I know Nancy was here a lot, but, uh, there's something different that changes every year. But yeah, that's kind of how it works. Um, and it just makes sure that we're in compliance with the state statute when it comes to the debt service.
So is this resolution, this is only gonna apply for what happens in twenty twenty-three? This is not a continuing thing?
Every year.
We have to do this every, okay.
Whenever we have a project that we potentially might issue debt for.
I see. All right.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertainer motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. On favor, sit aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administrator's report.
All right. And we've talked about a few items already, so I will just run through this. Um, city engineers and I just were talking about this beforehand. The, uh, the state house has already passed a, a preliminary, uh, bonding bill, um, one point nine billion. It doesn't include a lot of things that govern walls that sort of added, and I'm not sure. Their conversation is that they may have a second bonding bill as well. Um, I'm still hopeful that we may get our, our water, uh, quality and water, um, sewer project included. However, you know, with the legislature, we don't really know until, until it gets passed. It's gone to the state senate now, the, the bonding bill, and they have a very narrow majority there. So it's, it's possible there'll be some projects added. It's possible that it won't pass at all in the senate. So, but I'm gonna keep an eye on that. Uh, library board had a good meeting that I attended earlier. Very exciting. They have their one hundred twenty-fifth anniversary coming up, which I have to say is probably one, it's got to be one of the oldest libraries that I'm aware of, at least in southern Minnesota, in terms of, I did not realize that it was, you know, it was one hundred twenty-five years. So they are looking for some volunteers to help plan that project. Um, I had a couple of recommendations. I thought it might be do kind of a crossover event at the Aquatic Center in the summer. So I think that could be really fun. Uh, we won't let kids take books in the pool, but other than that, um, uh, getting the children involved who are already there, I think it can kind of be a really, uh, cool event. Uh, we have had a couple of kinks in the roof, but the, the good thing is the leaks that were there are not there. So, you know, now we've got a few new leaks, but, uh, I'm, 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 I'm hoping that, uh, it's under warranty for a year, and so, um, I'm hoping that throughout the, the, the next year, we'll have everything fixed, you know, if there is an issue that we need to get fixed. So that's the good thing about having under warranty. So, um, other than that, we've got this Earn, Sick, and Save Time. Um, that has passed. It's been signed by the governor already. Um, the city clerk and I have discussed it. You know, our, our goal is to make an, an argument that our policies already meet and exceed the requirements, which would mean that we won't have any extra cost. Um, it will be a cost, and I know Councilman Edgar and I were talking about it, to a lot of our local businesses. They're gonna see a, an extra, basically payroll tax in essence to pay for this. So, but the hope is that it won't hit the city books. Um, I talked about the Fire Hall bonding. And, um, other than that, I wanted to thank Jess for her hard work on the audit. I know it's been a lot. Um, she's got a, she's had a steep learning curve, kind of new to her, the process, so I think she's done a good job. And also, thanks to Nancy for being there to help us as well. So, um, that's kind of all I have. I will be out of the office for that APP at conference, um, the first part of next week. So with that, I would take any questions on my report.
Questions for Tim? When's the audit presentation? April?
We're currently scheduled April twelfth. It's possible that it might go to eighteen, the twenty-sixth, but right now, we're scheduled for the twelfth. If we don't have any other issues in the auditors, that's what they're planning. And they will be presenting this year. I know over the last couple of years, Nancy and I have kind of just presented it. Um, I thought would probably be beneficial to have them here because it's Jess's first time, so, um, that's kind of our goal.
That would be at five o'clock?
Yeah, we would do it beforehand. It'll be a kind of a work session starting at five. That'd be, that's kind of our, been our practice. However, I mean, I'm open to, if it doesn't work for folks' schedules, what we can do is we can put it at six, and we'll just try to make sure we have as light of a schedule otherwise, because I mean, I know it will take a while. Probably expect at least a half hour presentation with fifteen minutes for questions afterwards.
When will they know if it's the twelfth or the twenty-sixth?
They've advised us that it's gonna be the twelfth.
Okay, all right.
They will probably know I would, I would...
Set stone.
Yeah, I mean, you know, realistically, if, if, I guess for my goal, my goal would be to have the bonding or the, for the, for our bidding project, for the Fire Hall, if I can let ICS know tomorrow, they'll get that out. It's ready to go for bids. You know, usually, it's a thirty-day bidding period. So, you know, today's the eighth. If it goes out tomorrow, we could have those bids back in time to have the audit on the twelfth, so we kind of know where we're at officially. And then to also have bids back for you to potentially approve. I mean, that's kind of the goal, is to put those together, because then I want to get the, you know, the, the bond that we'd be issuing with David Drown ASAP after that. And, and, um, he, you know, he's basically told me, my guess, that, um, he's not comfortable starting until we have the bids, which is fair. However, we know that each month, the Federal Reserve's talking about raising the interest rates. So as soon as we can get that done, basically, in my opinion, the better. So anyways, if that's a desire to move it from the twelfth to a different date, if you're not gonna be here or something like that, we can take a look at that.
Long beer.
Um, and also, if five o'clock doesn't work for folks, we can look at doing it at six also. But just let us know.
Does anybody know tonight if it does?